You're watching City Channel 4, your window to our community.
All right, so we're good to go. Let's begin the work session for Tuesday, December the 6th. First topic is the Public Works Facility Master Plan Overview. Ron, you gonna start?
Good evening. Ron Kentucky, Public Works Director. I want to thank you all for your time to go out on the tour with us this afternoon. I also want to thank the staff that went along with us tonight. We had, or today, we had John Russler, Dave Gillum, Jim Villauer, and Keith Klein was doing the security from the street side. He was one of those closing the buildings up as we drove through. Transportation Services, Resource Management, Chris O'Brien, Mark Rumel, Rodney Walls, and Suzie Bethel was our bus driver. Appreciate her help. Water, we had Kevin Sluts, Dan Striegel from Equipment, and then Kumi Morris, our Facilities Manager, and then Jason Hovel was along with us. Now, this has been a process that's been going on for a little bit over a year now in regards to pulling together our master plan. Newman Munson has been a great partner. We had also another Maintenance Design Group who is their subconsultant as far as doing the space allocations for the plan. And so what I'm gonna do right now is turn things over to Dave Zerodnik and Jesse Bowman, who will run us through the master plan and the process that we went through to get to this point.
Good evening. I'm Dave Zerodnik with Newman Munson Architects. This is Jesse Bowman with Newman Munson. He's gonna fire up our screen here, but hopefully you all enjoyed the tour. That was kind of fun, wasn't it?
Yeah. Good evening. Thanks for going on the tour with us, too.
Well, thank you for letting us be a part of it. We're with Newman Munson, as we said, and we have been delighted to be a part of this. We have done a couple other of these facilities, one both in Cedar Rapids and in Des Moines, and you'll see a little bit of that, which we used as part of our, kind of our case study here. And that's why we're really happy to be able to bring some of our expertise to Iowa City, to our hometown here, and help you out with your facility as well. Also, a part of our team was Mark Ellis from Maintenance Design Group, along with a couple other members from his staff. Mark was not able to be here tonight. Originally, he wanted to be here, but he has other commitments up in Minneapolis. Maintenance Design Group, we brought onto the team because of their expertise. They have six locations throughout the United States, and they do nothing but these types of facilities for universities, for government facilities, for other cities, both much larger facilities, working with Minneapolis right now, and much smaller cities. So they bring a breadth of knowledge in terms of how they can bring some matrix and everything to this, and even challenge. I think one of the things you heard over and over again is how people are making it work tonight. And they say, "Well, this is what the standards we've kind of found work best for people to be efficient." They say, "Well, we can do with less. We can do with less. We can do with less." One of Mark's jobs was to say, "Yes, but if you had more, you could do more with less time," or less, you know, commitments of things. So there was a lot of back and forth, and you'll hear how the process went forward, so. I think the full master plan was given to you last Thursday in one of your packets. I remember it's 300 and some sheets, if I remember correctly. So I assume you haven't all gone through it with a fine-tooth comb, so tonight we just kind of wanna give you a little bit of an overview, talk about the process, and highlight a few things. Please interrupt as you have questions. I'd like to keep this kind of informal, or if you want to save your questions to the end, we're happy to answer them whenever. But we're here to just kind of help you get a better understanding of the recommendations that are being made, and, you know, why they're being made, so. That.
Is there a way to dim the lights?
Oh, we have them right here.
Oh, okay. Might be a little hard to see the screen, so as I talk, we'll have a few images to show you. So we always like to start off the process with actually getting to know your facilities and how you work and operate. So the way that we did this on this project is we involved the staff, the department heads, all the users that are working on this, and we actually sent out questionnaires. We followed that up with a detailed interview process where we sat down with everyone again, and we went through those questionnaires and got into the little bits and pieces about every little program. And that helped us develop a program document for review to kind of right-size the project. And the way we do that is actually through an analysis of data. We looked at your existing conditions. We also looked at past reports that you guys have done over the years, including the Eclipse Report, and we compared that to the program data that was developed from the questionnaires and where we understood the project. We then went back to that staff and actually were able to identify areas where we could merge that program together, and we actually right-sized that and actually made that program a little bit smaller with the help of MDG and using some of their matrix and expertise.
And we even took that opportunity to kind of look for other things. I think you heard on the bus tour today that in earlier studies, we had not looked at ideas, or had not considered ideas of incorporating transit and transit repair. As some of the rules with federal funding changes, it gives us opportunities to do more co-location than what was done in the past to find more efficiencies. So that's some of the things that are showing up in this report that were not even studied in past master plan opportunities.
Yeah, so for instance, the Eclipse Report never even addressed that, so you can't compare these two reports apples to apples, but it can give you just a little bit of a stepping stone on where you were at that point in time. So the second step that we walked through with staff is what we call the charrette process. And this is really a big brainstorming session where we actually worked really hard, and then we produced something to show back to the staff, to get input from them, and we refined it again. And we did this over and over, like four times in two days. So this was a very intense process that we went through. And we like to involve as many people as possible in that. So we had the owners there. We actually had all the users there as well, department heads. Our Facility Manager, MDG, was there, and us as Newman Munson was there.
We were camped out over at the water plant for two days straight, pretty much, just kind of chunk through this and get as much out of it in the time as quickly. And so it all started with kind of a little bit of an education walkthrough with staff. So we got all the staff together. We downloaded all the data we heard from them, made sure it was all correct, and then started talking to them a little bit about some of the ideas that we'd be putting forth, so.
So I might touch base on just a few of the ideas that we showed staff, just to kind of also educate you guys on what we looked at at that first day. And then we'll also show you some concepts that were developed on the second day and refined then later. So we always start with, "Well, where is the site that we're looking to master plan geographically in the city?" And it's centered south, it's in the center part of the city on the southern border. We then take a look back at the growth, and you can see from 1959 to 1989, the city went through a large expansion in area. In fact, it grew by 61% of area. And then 1990s into the future, it's more at a stable 1% to 2% growth, and that's what the projections right now are looking for. Some of the buildings that we toured today, and actually the majority of the buildings that we toured today, probably happened in that first period of time. And you can see that the city has grown exponentially during that time period. And the equipment, it was obvious today, has also grown in size, making it always, those spaces just a little bit harder to use. And the function and the way we actually operate out of these buildings has changed over that time period, too.
So it's understanding some of the growth processes the city's going through and how it's kind of normalized at that 1% to 2%, starts to help us predict better what we should be planning for future, as we're looking for this building to be not just making, meeting your current needs, but meeting needs on out into the 2030, 2040. Where are we going to be able to expand this building and keep that in mind? We can't build it all right now, nor should we, because we'd just be building extra space that we don't need. But we need to be able to plan for growth and understand how the city is growing in those efforts, so.
So then we also took a step back and just made sure that we identified exactly where all the different divisions are. Water Works is on the north edge of the site, or of the city. Police and Fire downtown, but they also have a site out at Big Ten. They have some warm storage units that they're renting out there.
We did not tour that site today, but it's basically a storage building, and the idea would be to be bringing that out, so you're not paying rent on a facility anymore.
Landfill is on the edge of town, right where you expect it, but they also have a presence on Riverside Drive that we saw today. Gilbert Court is where the Water Division is. We have the Napoleon and Fairgrounds sites, which also house, well, Fairground is rented, of course, for those vehicles that we need to keep stored. But then Fairgrounds is also streets and traffic and refuse. So the next thing that we identified as a team is, well, where are we traveling to and from and in between? So this is a little study on how long it takes and how many miles are driven between these sites, both summer and winter. And then we take a little bit of a step on what does it mean if we co-locate? And what are the operational efficiencies that we could gain? And the projected operational efficiency is almost $300,000 a year annually. We could save approximately 24,000 miles on the vehicles annually, and we see about 1,600 man-hours saved annually as well.
And I think we were being as conservative as we could with that, because we didn't want to overpromise. It was only things we could identify readily in terms of trips that we knew had to be taken for routine maintenance and things like that. When we have done some of these other facilities, we've noticed that people find ways that they are really topping what our predictions were, as they have co-located and find ways to work together that they're not making, you heard, "I gotta take a trip over to here to go get something that, if it was all stored together," we can't account for that, because I don't know what kind of things are gonna just pop up that are stored in other locations, so.
And even the efficiency with just being able to talk from streets to traffic in one building and the inner workings that happen between the different divisions. Next with staff, we kind of identified access points. So we have McCullister and Gilbert Street, and we identified those as being good access points to the site as far as traffic flow. We also noticed that we have a trail system that's surrounding our site, both on the east and west side. And we knew that there's housing growth here and future multifamily housing projected, so we wanted to be conscious of what we were building along that Gilbert Street, because some of those sites that we saw today are a little messy in the background, and we wanted to make sure that we were being a good neighbor to them. We took a little dive into zoning with the staff. Again, on the purple lot on the corner, this is that two acres that we mentioned that is a commercial zone. The gray is the future projected multifamily homes. And then the green is actually public land that is surrounding our site. So it's a unique opportunity with all the zoning that's around us and how we can incorporate into that. We even looked a little bit at utilities and making sure that we had access to utilities and that we felt like we didn't need to bring too much new infrastructure into the site. The second thing that we talked through staff were precedent images and studies. So this is actually different maintenance bays. So drive aisles that actually come in and you pull out, drive-through bays, long extensions, and we talked about the pros and cons and what that means for operations. So the maintenance facility that we looked at today is kind of a quasi makeshift of that, and what that could look like for them if they would actually move into a structure that's kind of right-sized. And we identified that with them, and they walked through the pros and cons with MDG as our consultant.
Yeah, we saw even today that they were using the drive aisles as part of workstations and things like that, just to get enough vehicles in there. And that's not uncommon for, you know, facilities that are of that age. These, like I said, these are people that know how to make things work. I mean, they're making your city work now, so they're gonna find ways to make it work. But is it the safest environment? Is it the best way they can do it? No, it's not. And I think this is the opportunity to give them the building that is the best tool for them, so they can do their job as efficiently as possible.
We even looked at the multi, excuse me, maintenance facilities in Des Moines, and just this kind of gives you an idea of what the materiality of some of these buildings are. But we really were studying the adjacencies and how different departments work, internal drive aisles, where office environment were, where the locker rooms were located next to different shops, or do they want to be next to different access points, and really identify, you know, what the staff felt was most appropriate for them.
Yeah, so it, you know, with these facilities, both being in Des Moines and Cedar Rapids, are close by, we would like to, as the design goes forward, invite that staff have opportunity to go up and talk to their peers in other locations to see how it's working. That's the true test. If they can talk to somebody that does the same job they do, and they can tell them that they're able to do it more efficiently, because they're located by somebody else who's doing a similar job, and they've been able to help each other out, I think that's the best learning curve we could have, just to kind of learn from other things. And of course, if something didn't work out well, we don't want to repeat that, so we'd like to hear about it. But this gives you a good idea of the types of facilities we've been able to create, and they're close by. We'd like to make use of that as a design tool for the staff.
We even looked at different options where we actually eliminate internal drives and look at external circulation and what that means, and the pros and cons for that. This is St. Charles, Missouri.
So these are some of the facilities that Maintenance Design Group had worked on. We were not a part of them, but they bring that other expertise into it that shows us different ways of doing it, kind of challenging some of the things we're familiar with and that staff's familiar with. And so certainly, all of this was part of our consideration as we developed plans and talked through how staff wanted to saw best operations.
This facility in Naperville actually uses an internal drive with a double stacking option, and what that means for operations. We walked through the pros and cons of that. And then we also wanted to take a look at the transit options. Currently, your transit facility is a stacked parking system where there's no internal drive aisle, so the bus ahead of you has a problem. You have to let the other buses alongside you depart before you can actually get that bus out. So there's some operational things there, but then there's also some additional cost in circulation. So we covered that and just made sure that we were aware of all the pros and cons of those with the staff. Our next step during that charrette process, of course, is to actually develop concept plans. So we developed several concept plans that night after confirming our data and talking through those pros and cons, and then we reviewed it with staff in the morning. We developed six plans. The top three actually incorporate the purchase of the corner lot, and the bottom three here do not have that incorporated. And we looked at the pros and cons of each of those. And this is a moment where staff gets to give us feedback as designers, when they see a hazard, let's say, out in the backyard, like, "Oh, this is gonna be a turning issue," or "This is a blind corner." They point those things out to us, and we can make adjustments and further refine that.
Gives them an opportunity to take a look at the plan and imagine how they would do their daily work on that site. And we did hear lots of comments, like, "Okay, I've gotta bring my loader out, and I gotta turn here. How's that all gonna work?" And we really had a good opportunity to talk through with every department.
How they operate on a daily basis. So then we take that information and we synthesize it again and further refine it with the program and with all the other expertise that we bring in. We met with the department heads again later on as we came back and developed this plan, which was kind of our approved concept for synthesis, for the process that we're gonna go through next. And during that process, we actually identified that maintenance and transit may actually make a good coupling together, not only because we can share resources, but it actually allowed the site to open up somewhat, so that circulation or on the site is actually improved. Our next step, then, is to kind of make sure that we're looking at the actual site and the design a little bit in the master plan. We identified the South District Plan that was already developed ahead of us as a good jumping-off point. We realized that Gilbert Street is kind of our gateway to our community on the south, and really wanted to make sure that we were paying particular attention to that connection, and really enhancing the connection of the bike's trail system into Terry True Blood and making it more easily accessible to the Ball Diamonds. We also know that we have residential units that will be put in this side of the property, so we wanted to make sure that we were respecting the scale of those residential units. And in the zoning code, there's some areas that are identified where you have to put setbacks and offsets. So we looked at that pattern and what that would mean on the exterior of a building, and then really tried to create an opportunity to like enhance something that was identified in the South District Plan. So this, again, was that original concept design, and these buildings are huge. And I just wanted to kind of briefly give you an idea of what scale looks like on this. So this is Kinnick Stadium overlaid on our site, just to give you a little bit of an idea of how long that facade is. And we want to make sure that we do a very good job of breaking that scale down, not only for those residents, but for the pedestrian experience. So this is a little bit of a look at what could happen. These are renderings that are not set in stone. Please don't think that this is the final, final result at any means, but in the South District Plan, we identified an extension of artwork into this part of the city. So there's a possibility that we do Hercules on Parade, or the Bookmark Project actually extends down and becomes a part of this trail system. Another idea was community gardens, and maybe we want to do some test plots or some edible landscape kind of options were thrown around. Or fitness was also identified. The blue zone was something that wanted to be enhanced in the South District, so we thought about making a fitness loop and what that could look like. And then you can start to see, we want to talk about materiality a little bit, too, because if we have warmer materials that kind of reflect Terry True Blood a little bit, what's going on there, respects that. Also, we want to make sure that we use durable materials that will stand the test of time, precast concretes and stuff like that for the maintenance facility.
So one of the things you'll notice is we're using the building as kind of a fence, if you will. Even looking at the site plan, putting the building's facade as something that kind of shelters the rest of the working area within the site is kind of part of what's driving the plan a little bit. So we're not seeing a bunch of parked cars along the edge of the road that need to be repaired or something like that. So we will, the plan is to kind of develop this such that that large-scale building gets broken down into smaller masses, but shields all the work that's being happened back in there. As you see as part of these images, one of the concept ideas is to allow visual connection into the buildings, though, because we do think it's an opportunity to celebrate the work and the equipment and everything that's in there. I think it's just fascinating to go and see all those end loaders. I saw everybody kind of peeking around today. You kind of want to see them. So let's let the public view their property here.
And then even further breaking the scale down with pedestrian-level benches and lights, just really enhance that corridor. This is an image of what that experience could be along Gilbert, again, heading towards Terry True Blood. So with all of that data put in, we then go back to our plan here and kind of developed our last kind of concept and what we think is the final recommendation for the master plan. It was early identified that staff parking to the north would be ideal, not only for staff, but then on weekends, this parking could actually become an overflow for the Ball Diamond parking, which is already taxed at times. Likewise, there's a need for parking on the south part of the site for Terry True Blood, so by putting staff parking on that location, that can also overflow. These parking lots are open to the public essentially during the weekend, and we have our building acting as the fence, and then other fencing to protect the back-of-house areas. The yellow bar that you see in front is shared office space and locker rooms, so there's a lot of efficiency gained in that. In Peach, you're seeing streets and traffic. Their shops are actually located along the west, and this allows for pull-through access and also the ability for them to pull their trailers up to the back, throw on their equipment needs, and then get out of there and do their jobs. Water Department in the light blue is kind of centered down on the south part, near the wash bay. And this is critical, because we heard from their staff that they have a lot of items that come out the street that are really dirty and messy. They need to be washed down before they can be worked on. So they'll wash their equipment, pull into their shop and work. Just north of that, we identified solid waste going there. This is also because of smell reasons. These trucks are smelly during the summertime. We didn't get to experience that today, but I've been around them. They're very odor. There's a lot of odor. And it also gives the ability to expand this north as the city grows, and...
So one of the things that we might point out is, and this was mentioned, I don't know if y'all caught that, but right now, there's that wash facility, but you're driving around outside. And as you can imagine, this time of the year, that creates ice and other kind of issues, especially if you're parking a wet car somewhere where it's potentially gonna freeze. So we want to make sure we can wash your vehicle, bring it into the heated facility, and let it dry out overnight. So we're not putting these expensive pieces of equipment in more danger and lowering their useful life, so.
South of that, then, our combined maintenance and transit facility. Maintenance is in pink. Transit is in the darker blue. And then the combination areas where we have combined break rooms, locker rooms, fitness center, office space for them. And that is kind of nice, too, because it creates kind of an office front on each end of your site, so if you have any visitors, they have a logical place to go, find out where they're entering. We have an existing fuel island that will remain. Just north of that, we have auction lot, a fire tower. The existing wash bay will remain. Police and Fire will move off of that Big Ten site into the warm storage facility with some renovation work. The salt storage building will remain, but we'll kind of rework this area to make this a little more effective and efficient for them. And then with that said, I think that wraps up that master plan. We'll move into phasing. So part of our first step in phasing is identifying if we have enough locker room space. So we'll do a little bit of a study to see if we need to add any locker rooms. This is a potential problem. As we move people onto site, we're gonna have more people there. We need to do a quick study of that. Police and Fire will move over in a renovation project, and a fire tower will be constructed for their training. We're hoping to accomplish the wash bay and then all of the parking and the shops in Phase 1. And those are the buildings that we saw today that were probably in the most need of repair or replacement. Subsequent phasing could be office addition and additional, and then installing the parking lot. Solid waste can move over at a later date. During Phase 3, we see maintenance moving over. And in this case, we're suggesting that the large vehicle bays get built and not the small vehicles, and we actually service small vehicles out of the large bays, because when transit moves over in a final phase, we're gonna need those large bays for the buses, and addition will happen for the small vehicles on the end of maintenance. And then we've identified future growth for transit as their needs change, and the city grows and more routes are established. We'll also take a look at sustainability as we design Phase 1. Things that we may want to consider are bio swales or rain gardens to help with contaminated water. We may want to also consider bike trail connections and making sure that we have good access to parking your bike. Daylighting is another thing that we want to consider in this design. Not only will it help reduce your operational electrical load, but it also improves safety, having a well-lit work environment. We'll look at HVAC systems such as geothermal and de-stratification fans to help with cooling in the large bay. We may look at photovoltaics and what that means. It may mean that we can't afford the PV array, but maybe we want to plan that structure so that it can accept that PV array. And then we'll also look at wastewater, not wastewater, excuse me, rainwater collection. We actually did this in Des Moines, where we took a container and we connected it to one of the storm drains, and then the Streets Department of Traffic, whenever they need use of non-potable water, they can actually gravity dump that into the back of a truck and take it out to water a tree, or do whatever it is that they need to clean off that we really don't need to use potable water for. It's a pretty inexpensive thing, inexpensive thing, and when the water's available, you just use it. So with that, who has the first question?
Yeah, who wants to ask questions? How much?
So the overall master plan in the report is around $40 million. Phase 1, we're looking between 10, maybe up to 12.
Really, the hope was tonight that we can set the table for CIP discussions, because the capital improvement plan that you will see from staff does include Phase 1 funding. And just because this is a new project that hasn't been discussed a whole lot at the council table, we want to give you the opportunity tonight to see the facilities and ask those questions. It's a complicated project to fund, and we'll get into that in January, but it is considered a nonessential purpose, which means that we cannot bond without going to the public for a referendum. Of course, a referendum on this type of facility is very difficult. So there's been a lot of planning for years trying to build reserves for this purpose, and we'll get into that, because the funding stream for this is, it consists of little bits and pieces from multiple funds to make something like this happen.
How many places do we currently rent that would be pulled into the even Phase 1?
Well, you saw the fairgrounds and the Police and Fire facility. Am I missing anything else? No, just those two?
Well, I think the staff and you have done a brilliant job of presenting us with current facilities that are not in the best of possible conditions, and a plan that really looks good on first glance. And it's, it looks like you and the staff worked together very well in producing it, so bravo to you and Jeff and everybody else involved in it. I guess I find myself needing to emphasize one particular point, and that is, tonight, we will be considering adoption of a carbon emission reduction plan, and I take that very seriously, as I think other council members do as well. So as we're imagining this plan as it being built out, I think we should probably look at our current energy use with regard to the facilities we have, and thinking, "Okay, eight years from now, we gotta be at least 30% less energy." eight years from now, we got to be at least 30% less energy, we have, we have to have at least 30% less energy use from those, from the, whatever facilities exist at that moment in time. And on into the future, the use has to ramp down a lot. We'll get into that later on tonight, but the carbon emission reduction part of this, energy efficiency, use of geothermal, PVs, whatever, needs to be a part of how we're thinking ahead.
Well, having looked at facilities since I came on council seven years ago, it's exciting to start to see some actual work. I mean, not that we haven't been working on it, but to see that we're going to get closer to actually building some things because a lot of our staff work in some less-than-ideal facilities. So it's nice to see this and being able to get the efficiencies of moving on to one site for so many of our different departments is really positive. So look forward to it.
Well, I'll take that a step further. I mean, the facilities were really bad, I mean, just to be frank. And I think Susan's saying it, you know, more politically correct, but I think that it's necessary. I mean, I don't know, you know, the setup that you had as far as, you know, having us out there in the cold and everything else really played well on me. And so this is no, I mean, I wouldn't say, I think there's some considerations that Jim and other councillors may have as far as some of the things that, from a strategic plan standpoint, that we want to obviously see actualize in the particular building. But beyond that, I think this is, you know, it's well overdue. And just talking with some of the other folks that were kind of in and around and a part of the conversation, you know, it's, it's just pretty bad. I mean, I would, I mean, I would feel uncomfortable going into work there every day and, you know, I just, yeah, I'd feel uncomfortable going there and work every day. And, and, you know, I think, I think you may have mentioned it in the beginning of the presentation is that, you know, these are our city employees, these are the folks that are running the city on an everyday basis, night and day. And for them to be working in the facilities that we saw today where, you know, it's just, it's just a kind of, kind of atrocious. So I'm excited. I mean, I think this is awesome kind of moving forward. I have some interesting, kind of progressive questions or elements. I don't necessarily know if this is the right opportunity to talk about them right now. I think you've talked about the photovoltaic and some of the other things that were consistent with that. I'm going to throw out there, and I know this isn't necessarily for discussion, but you know, possibility of looking at like gender-neutral restrooms. And so before that, you know, since we're in the design phase now, thinking about how that could be a possibility, you know, because I think that's something that I've been interested in, not necessarily from just a city standpoint, but just a community standpoint in general. I think that many of my questions were answered by, you know, staff ahead of time as far as all the different things that could be brought on into this particular project. So I love consolidation. I think it's great. Keep up the good work. Maybe make it even faster. I know that we have to talk about it from CIP conversation standpoint, but this is good stuff. So I appreciate it. Thank you, thank you to you and also to staff and for staff having to, you know, work in the conditions that you've worked in prior to this, so.
I think the investment is well worth it and your comment about that they've made things work. I mean, that was obvious during our tour, you know, we could see where the rain stain, the water stains on the ceiling and even around all the electrical equipment and what they've made do with all these years. I think John or Rockney and I were talking about, why has it taken this long? It's just so amazing to be able to consolidate some of these efforts and then thinking of the energy efficiency too, as Jim had mentioned, and that's one of our priorities on the council. And even to the point of rain gardens and the rain barrels and using natural lighting, and that's just amazing. I'm very impressed.
And I guess I would just make a comment too. You know, Jim's right, we are going to be addressing a carbon emission reduction plan tonight. And I think as we go forward, it's going to be very important for our city that we demonstrate what these, you know, high-level environmental standards will ultimately look like and we show the cost savings that we can get. Having said that, we understand that with a lot of the environmental standards in the buildings, it's going to probably be a higher investment on the front end, but I think over time, we'll demonstrate those cost savings. So I think the three things that really jumped out at me, the bioswells. I think if we can incorporate that, you know, I think, we're not going to get into all those details tonight, that's certainly something I'd like to invest in. The photovoltaic cells, I think was a big thing as well. And then, of course, the community garden aspect. So those were three things that really jumped out at me. Very impressed with the design and I'm really excited about this because I think these sorts of municipal buildings, we do have control over. And so I think, given that fact, it's important that we sort of show an example to the private sector in terms of what can be achieved with these sorts of designs. So great work. And also thanks for our staff too. I think, you know, based upon what Pauline had said, it is amazing what our city employees have basically had to endure and through no fault of their own. And the fact that they're able to deliver that top-end service over these years is a real tribute to them. So thank you for all the wonderful work that our staff does as well.
Yeah, it was, it was an interesting tour. We were set up beautifully in terms of being presented with this ambitious plan. I think the key issue that, you know, and Jim spoke to this is, you know, the presentation emphasized the efficiencies with the, you know, the staffing efficiencies. The key piece moving forward in addition to that would be the energy efficiencies and how, you know, what gains we have with this facility in that regard.
Okay, anything else?
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Excellent presentation, incidentally. Okay, our next topic has to do with the city's clerk selection process. You all received a memo from Marion, December the first, dated December 1. I want to thank Marion for putting some energy into that and some thought into it and writing that memo for us. You may have noticed that some of the memo differs from what I communicated to you individually about how we would proceed with regard to appointing an interim clerk. And that is primarily because subsequent to conversations, we realized that it wasn't really necessary to appoint an interim clerk, that Julie is already empowered to act as, in the city clerk's stead. And it's my understanding that we would be trying to make sure that Kelly would also be deputized and therefore be able to operate as a city clerk. So in that interim period, there'd be people ready to perform the duties of the city clerk for, while we're doing the search itself. I want to say too, this is hard to talk about because of, because Marion is such an important part of this city government, you know. So anyhow, while I struggle through with my part of this, I'll try to find something else here to say. So we've already distributed a job announcement that went out sometime last week, Jeff? Yeah, okay. And it was revised in accord with conversations I had with you individually and especially some things about bullet items, you know, Susan, that you and I talked about. Let's see. And Marion's memo presents a timeline, which she and I discussed extensively, and a possible committee structure for winnowing applications we receive in response to that job announcement. So I'd like to hear your thoughts about the timeline, the committee structure and so on. And to kind of help us get started with that part of it, I find myself thinking that it would be good for the council to really take a leadership role in this as a whole rather than expecting the staff to do a lot of work because actually it's a council appointment and I think we need to be doing a bit more here. Maybe I'm talking about myself as well, but that's what I find myself thinking. So my suggestion really would be that we designate three of our council members to participate in a committee that would include Jeff, Eleanor, Karen Jennings, and maybe one or two other people on the staff. I don't know, maybe Jeff and Eleanor and Marion have ideas that it's about someone else who might be a significant contributor to the committee's work. And if my suggestion further is, I don't know if your eyes are sufficient at the moment for this, but if Susan's willing, I'd like to recommend that Susan act as chair of this committee involving three council members, Eleanor, Jeff, and Karen Jennings. So, so let's have this discussion. I mean, we need to kind of flesh out a few things here.
I'll just comment, Jim and I had talked earlier and I'm very, I feel very strongly that, like Jim does, that the council needs to have a fairly strong leadership role in this. This position is one of only three that the council actually appoints. I mean, all the other 600-plus city employees report to one of those three, city clerk, city attorney, or city manager. And with that being one of our three appointees, I think it's imperative from a practical standpoint and from a public perception standpoint of how important we see this and that we are very much involved. I totally agree with Jim also that to have Jeff and Eleanor and if they, you know, come forward with another one or two or whatever, staff members that they think should be involved, I'm very supportive of considering that because they are the people who work with the clerk on a regular and ongoing basis and understand probably more of the intricacies necessary in that position than even we as council members do. So I would agree with what Jim says. Yes, I'm very interested in being on that committee and I'm willing to chair it if that's the desire of the council.
How about the rest of you?
I would be in favor of Susan being an active role in that with her experience on the council and with the city clerk position. I would be very much in favor of that and would be willing to serve if no one else is.
I'd be willing to serve since I'm going to be on the way out.
Sounds good to me.
You know, I've been around Marion, I've seen what she's done. I try to stop at her office on a regular basis. I know since we've gone to electronic, we don't have as much time that we meet with the city clerk, but I've continued to go down there because there's so much you can learn from your city clerk and pick up and just, I'd be willing to serve on that as well. One of the things I learned in looking at the job announcement was how much the city clerk has to do or is responsible for and how, what a terrific staff the clerk's office has right now. So we're really very lucky in that sense, right? Well, we have two volunteers to join Susan on a committee. So does Jeff, Eleanor, you have any thoughts about this? I mean, my idea is that the committee could begin its work kind of right away. Yeah, go ahead.
Pauline, do you have any particular feeling as far as being on the committee? I would like to be on the committee. If you prefer, I mean, that's fine.
If you feel you have the time. Because I'm retired and have plenty of time, so as much time as it would take, I don't know.
This is an issue.
That's fine.
I think I know why you want to be on the committee, it makes sense, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, it's a, I mean, one, this is, yeah, yeah, I mean, and this is an awkward conversation, you know, because it's Marion and I don't know if everybody else knows this, but Marion is a very, you know, important person, not only, I think, to the city, but to me personally, and so.
Well, I think we need to keep in mind, to a certain extent, this is not about Marion.
Oh, no, I agree.
I mean, this, and we'll have that opportunity to thank her, but this is about the future of Iowa City and getting a person in that position who, you know, can serve this city, you know, hopefully for a long time and very well as the clerk, so. And my concern, and I'm not here to try and pick who's on the committee, but I think it's got to be people who've got time and flexibility with their time because I think the timeframe that is set here to try and get this done, depending upon the number of applications we get in, there could be considerable time involved in reading and reviewing those applications and then having to be available for meetings as we try to pare down those applications to a group of semifinalists and do interviews and then finalists and do interviews or however we decide to structure it as a committee. So I think, I think the availability in terms of the number of hours and the flexibility is critically important.
Yeah, and I would just add to that, I think Terry and Susan have served on council for some time, so I think have a pretty good understanding of the role of the city clerk and the city clerk's duties. And so I think it will be really helpful to have them both on.
And I don't disagree with that. I mean, I think more I have a kind of, and I don't necessarily, we have to discuss this today, I have comments or questions about the process and how we go through that. And so if that's a conversation kind of later on, I can wait on that. I mean, I'm okay with the current volunteers. I was just asking because I know Pauline has just said that unless anybody else wanted to volunteer.
Right, and I'm fairly new on the council, I know, and you've been on the council longer.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that part, yeah.
Starting out in the January with my injury, I had a lot of interaction with the city clerk and saw what things above and beyond even the job description that they can do and help the council out. And so I have a good feel for that, I believe.
Why don't you mention briefly what other topics you want to address because maybe we should discuss them tonight and maybe we shouldn't. So what are you thinking about?
I mean, it's, you know, I think some of it came out from some of the police chief search. And so, I mean, I'd be interested from a process standpoint and that we've kind of sent out the information, but ensuring that we could get some demographic information. I know that's voluntary to demographic information within the process. You know, there's, I don't know if, I mean, I can go on for a couple of points. I don't necessarily know that it's important for this entire conversation. I think it's more maybe me having a conversation with you, Jeff, and having a conversation with Susan. It's more about the actual kind of, as or not, I mean, again, as they're kind of going through picking the applications, that type of thing. It's not necessarily for this discussion.
This is a, this is a council appointment. I'm here to assist, as is Eleanor, anybody else that you want, but if there's process questions, this is the appropriate time to be addressing those. It's not, it would be more appropriate for you to address those process questions now than trying to work through me or Eleanor or Marion next week.
Okay.
Because it's really this body that determines what that process is.
Okay, well, I mean.
I think the basic, I think the kind of basic things you need to decide are, what is this committee's task? Is it to go through the applications and pull them down to a manageable amount, then get to finalists at the whole council interviews, get to semifinalists at the whole council interviews? I mean, that's, I think, the big process question that we need to figure out.
The other question I guess I would have, and I think this probably is relating to some of the stuff that Kingsley's alluding to, is, okay, the job description's been put out there, but where has it been put and is there, is there any thought in terms of any effort to specifically trying to recruit? I mean, I don't know, I don't know where it's been put out. I don't know how many applicants we would, we'll get from where it has already been put. I don't want to see us in a situation where, based on a timeline constraint, we feel like we have to move forward, but at the same time, we don't have the number of applicants that we would want, you know, knowing like a lot of these positions, the people that have the kind of experience, you know, that we're going to be looking for, we may have difficulty getting the demographic diversity that we would like to have in the applicant pool. But I'd like to make sure that we make every effort to get that diversity, you know, in that, in that pool as possible.
So my thought there is that the committee should be empowered to find out from Jeff who, where the job announcement went, you know, how it's been disseminated so far and to modify it if appropriate, if the committee thinks it's appropriate, to make it more expansive if they, if the committee thinks that's appropriate. But otherwise, the committee's charge would be to winnow, as Eleanor articulated, to sort through the initial applications, produce a shorter list. I'd say devise a process in the sense of whether it wants a semifinalist and finalist and then what's, looking ahead, whether the committee believes that we should have some kind of, you know, processes for the public to be involved in the latter stage where there are semifinalists or finalists involved or not. I mean, I, and so the committee, I think, would have to come back to us and say, this is, this is the latter part of the process that we have in mind. Is that okay to you for council?
I'm wondering whether the committee could convene after tonight's meeting and then at our following meeting, January 3rd, come up with a proposed outline for their proposal in terms of how we'd conduct that. That would seem. That would seem to be the most efficient as opposed to sort of, you know, identifying every detail now would be my thought process. I would trust the committee to come up with a recommendation that we could maybe modify at that time.
That sounds reasonable to me, what do you think?
I think that's fine. I think we come up with something.
One question for you, Marion, I'm wondering, and this actually came up with the police chief process, I'm wondering with the professional organizations that you're a part of, do they have a suggested best practices process or recommendation to ensure a diverse hiring pool for these sorts of things? I mean, that, are you aware of anything along those lines, sort of a best practices hiring that they recommend?
The professional organizations that I'm affiliated with, both, or all three regionally, statewide, et cetera, have different procedures and they go through a standard, if you will, procedure for all of their applications to ensure that, and has identified that as a goal and is an ongoing type of a thing.
Okay.
So that is being followed much in the same way as Jeff will report back to you that the city follows in their hiring practices.
Jeff, Eleanor, can either of you at this moment recommend anybody else on staff who should be a member of this committee?
No, not right now. I think maybe Eleanor and Marion and I can talk and I think it's important to understand from the clerk's office perspective who they work with within the organization, perhaps more closely, but I don't have any recommendations right now.
We can bring that back on the 3rd if we decide that there's somebody else.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, so I think we have some clarity here, right? What we, what I'm not clear about is who the three members are other than Susan and Terry, so.
What did we decide? Yeah, Pauline, no, I, yeah.
Okay.
Susan, answer my question, my concerns.
Good deal. Okay, can you think of anything else we should discuss with regard to this particular topic? Okay, thanks, thanks to the three of you for volunteering. All right, the next topic is meeting with area legislators and Marion sent an email to all of you on my behalf. As far as I know, two responded and time's passed, so I don't know where we stand on that really. So would, would you like to meet as a full council with our local legislative delegation? If so, we have to get an invitation out pretty much right away.
I think, I will say that I think I was maybe one of the people that responded. I think for me, it did give me pause because I wanted to know why, especially with the kind of quick pace of it. I assumed it was around the legislative priorities or maybe it wasn't. I wasn't sure and so, but I have particular reasons why I wanted to meet with area legislators. I think it was around our legislative priorities, in particular around kind of the union discussion that we had last council meeting and wanted to ensure that, at least from a county-wide standpoint, that we send a clear message to the state. But then that was, I'll be honest with you, that was my, my only focus for that particular meeting. I mean, I assumed that was going to be a big focus, but I don't necessarily know kind of what you were thinking as well, and so that's why, that's where I kind of answered or the reason why I answered in the way I did.
I mean, I'm more than.
I think we just, we've sent them our priorities and I know we've met with them before and not a lot has gotten done and sometimes I feel like it's fruitless. As much as I'd like it to mean more, I mean, we, we can send them and we can put our priorities out there. It's, and especially with the way that the House and Senate in the state of Iowa have changed so much, I don't know how far we're going to get and I'm all for collaborating, but it just seems like the last time we met, we really didn't get anything done.
Well, I guess I should be clear, there is an alternative. Instead of having all seven of us meet with the local delegation, we could have three of us meet with whichever members of the local delegation were available, so.
That would.
That's an alternative.
If you think you can accomplish something, I would do it, but.
Well, I don't know if we can either because, you know, you're exactly right, the balance shifted dramatically, so.
I guess I would really like to meet with them because, you know, I think we have the legislative priorities, but I think it's also each one of those legislative priorities, I mean, I think they can get a sense of what we really want to focus on and also whether we can be, you know, helpful to them in terms of, you know, supporting what their agenda is too. So I definitely want to do that and I think we should do more of precisely that sort of thing. In terms of whether it was three or seven, I guess I don't have a strong preference for that, although it may be good for the public to do, you know, add the full seven to do, to observe that entire process. So I guess if I had to pick, I would prefer all seven, but I'm not dogmatic about that.
Yeah, to be blunt, there's a, there is a difference between having an open meeting involving all seven council members that has to be available to the public, et cetera, versus having three members meet and having a more informal discussion.
Dynamic, sure.
Yeah, I mean, there is a difference, so.
I think that with the seven, it shows a more unified effort on the council's part, that these are all of our legislative priorities, so if it's logistically possible to do that, I think that's, would be a good way to go.
I mean, I'm fine with doing it, I think, some of the feedback I think we've gotten before is I think the legislators, legislators have found it not necessarily the best use of their time either and they have very busy schedules, but, you know, to put out the invitation and see if we can get them to, I think, I think Rockne made a good point about, you know, are there ways that we can be supportive of them, given the changes that occurred with the last election? I think that's just as important as them knowing what our priorities are because I'm quite sure with our delegation, our priorities are pretty much the same as what theirs would be anyways. So, you know, with these changes, are there ways that we can be more supportive of them than necessarily we directly have been in the past? But I would agree, Jim, there's not a whole lot of time, so.
Yeah, and I'm conscious that I'm going to be out of town beginning on the 17th, so there are, there are constraints that we all face. Okay, well, we could try to select a particular date, you know, I'm going to turn to Marion about this because I do it habitually.
In the past, we've done like early morning meetings lots of times, like a 7:30.
Usually it's easier to get a larger number of people are available first thing in the morning before they're booked for the rest of the day. I, again, if there's an interest on the majority of council to do that, I certainly can do, we can send out a very quick email to the area legislators asking their availability for first thing in the morning and then come back to you and see what's shaping up then because while it takes the time to get seven of you to figure out a date, it's really irrelevant if seven of you can come and they can't.
Yeah, so I'd say any, any morning next week, you know, what's, what, what could they do?
Any morning next week, starting anytime after 7:00.
Yeah.
Anytime after 7:00. Okay, all right.
Is first part of January too late?
Well, the first part of January, the session starts, I believe, the 9th, so unless you're doing weekends, that's, they're gone.
Okay.
And you're, that would be the other availability. They're back on weekends.
So you could suggest that as a possibility to, you know, if the next week is just not possible for them, perhaps some weekend early in January or, you know, during the month of January.
And that first weekend, that first Saturday won't work because that's when you've got your budget.
Right.
Right. Okay, are we agreed about that?
Sounds fine.
Thank you. Okay, that leads us to clarification of agenda items. I want to mention item 4F2 in the, which one is that? Oh, yeah, on the agenda. It's a letter from Mark Signs on behalf of the Affordable Housing Coalition, making a recommendation about funding, setting aside more money than we currently have decided to set aside for affordable housing stuff. And I don't want to go into great detail about it here, but I think that ought to become part of our budget discussion. It's, I can understand where Mark Signs is coming from. Everybody's looking for item 4F2, so did I?
It's the letter, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, yeah, I mean, it was part of our discussion and agreement of the, it was a consensus of the majority of council that we would start at the $500,000 for this next year. So I would assume that's the way council's already, or staff is already building budget.
Well, we have, we've finished our budget process internally, we're just compiling the document and we'll get that out to you in the next week or two. The direction, at least as I interpreted from council, was that $500,000 was that floor and if it could work in the budget that staff felt comfortable, we would increase that amount. And we are, we will be recommending to you with the budget, $650,000 is where staff ended up with our recommendation. So yes, we will get into that during the budget and if you feel like you want to increase that amount, we can help guide you through that process in terms of where to pull those additional funds from, but the budget you'll get from us is $650,000.
Okay. How about the rest of you? I have a few other items, but I don't want to.
I'm, I'm really comfortable in terms of where we are. I think obviously we'd always, always like to do more, but I'm incredibly proud of the progress we've made in this particular area when we're balancing with other budget needs, so I'm comfortable with where we are at this point.
Okay, so how about other agenda items, so?
I had a question about, I don't know if it's appropriate to talk about it, but the resolution for item 42, the sidewalk cafes.
Sorry, item 42?
4D2.
Oh, sorry.
I missed the D2.
It's like RD2.
4D2. You know, I just had, could you just maybe describe a little bit, Jeff, the change here? Is the big change that we're going to see with the sidewalk cafes that don't now be detached from the building itself. I guess I haven't received any negative feedback on this proposal, so I'm assuming everything's okay with the downtown business owners. Have you received any negative feedback about that particular proposal to detach it from the building?
No, and they were part of the process. This has been in the works for a couple of years and it really just applies to the Washington Street, the improved portions of Washington Street and the, I guess, the logic behind the detached cafes is twofold. One, it puts the pedestrians closer to the storefront windows, so from a retail standpoint, if you have merchandise in those windows, you want pedestrians close to that to draw you into the store. And two is, for anybody with mobility impairments, the predictable path is really important. And so what we've done is, you know, we've, if you can remember the Washington Street portion that's under construction now in front of the Engler, it was a bit serpentine type of arrangement and it was tough enough, if you didn't have mobility impairments to navigate.
Visually challenged, it was very tough.
Right, and so it's about creating that, that visible path. So we made sure when we designed the Washington Street project that we could detach all of them and create that predictable path. The 4D2 does a few other things. It shrinks the, kind of the door swing provision, so, you know, if you have a parked car, you don't want to be opening your door into a cafe and we used to have a three-foot wide door swing area and we feel comfortable going down to two feet to provide a little bit of extra space for cafes. And then one that will be a bit of an experiment is not requiring the anchoring of those fences actually into the concrete. So, you know, the fences will look much the same, but they will not need to be anchored into that concrete. We're going to see how that, see how that plays out.
Does that have to do with just letting the concrete cure for longer before we drill in it or just not wanting to drill in it at all?
There's, you know, in some, on some of the older streets, if you look at Dubuque and certainly parts of Washington Street before the improvements, you would see a patchwork of old holes, you know, the cafes tend to grow and expand and shift over time, sometimes even if they have the same layout, they drill the hole just a couple inches over and it starts to look bad after several years. So, so we're going to try without it. One thing that, you know, we have to be worried about is that cafe creep, you know, so you say you have to keep eight feet, does that start to inch in and then it's seven feet, six feet? We don't want to be out chasing folks around with that, with a tape measure, trying to guarantee eight feet. But these cafes are interlocking, they're big, they're metal, they're heavy, I'm not too worried about that, so. This is a bit of an experiment, but it just applies to Washington Street and we'll see how it goes this first year.
So Jeff, you were saying that, so the clear sidewalk area will be eight feet, is that?
Correct, and that's, that's the same. So what we have now is the storefront, then we have a sandwich board sign area, I think it's 18 inches, maybe two feet, where you can have a sandwich board if you need that for your business, and then the pedestrian pathway and then the cafe zone, so you kind of think of different zones.
Six and a half, seven feet, basically.
Well, the eight feet is mandatory, so even if you have a sandwich board, if you have a sandwich board sign and you want to do a cafe, you still got to have that eight feet still, yeah.
Other agenda items? While you're thinking, I want to mention two, item 4F8. It's a November 28 email from Captain Bill Campbell explaining his and the police department's actions in response to protesters blocking I-80. I want to praise Bill's handling of the situation and praise the department's handling the situation and also praise him for his crafting of the response, the written response. So, well done, Bill Campbell. And then item 4F1, I'm sorry, 4F11 in the late handout, it's a letter to me from Colonel Baumgartner of the Corps concerning the Coral Ridge, Coral Ridge Lake Regulation Manual. So Jeff, I'm guessing you're going to follow through on that letter and, because it, you know, came out of the blue as far as I was concerned.
We'll discuss with Johnson County Emergency Management and the other jurisdictions. It may come up at another joint meeting, I would suspect, but my takeaway from that letter was that the Corps wanted a hard number commitment and wanted one entity to take the lead from the area, so we'll need to sort through that.
Okay, good deal. Any other agenda items? Okay, that gets us to the last topic, information packet discussion, we'll start with November 17.
Excuse me, before you do that, what about appointments?
Switch those to the formal.
We're doing, okay.
We're doing it in the formal.
Okay, sorry, forgot.
November 17.
Just IP4, great work by, IP4, great work by city staff. It's another update about the transition payments to tenants of Rose Oaks Apartments for city's Affordable Housing Fund, so.
Okay, I want to mention IP, I guess IP7 through 9, minutes of the Board of Adjustments meetings concerning the Lusk Avenue building. And I want to focus only on the comments that the board members made. Several of them, perhaps all of them really, pretty clearly suggest that we consider modifying the zoning code to try to ensure that situations like that particular building don't occur again because it was so hard for the members of the board. I'm pretty persuaded that it does need to be amended, that the code needs to be amended. Exactly how, I don't know. Doug and others on staff are much more expert in this than I am, but I thought the members of the Board of Adjustment raised some pretty meritorious concerns. What do you all think?
I agree.
I agree as well. And do we want to put it on like a work session topic or what do you think, Joe?
Well, I just have a question for Eleanor, though. Is this something that we should stay away from until that whole situation is resolved?
Oh, that's what was going through my head when we were talking.
I mean, I'm just concerned that it, and I can't remember if it's been appealed or whatever, but.
I wouldn't, in some respects, I would say no, but this is, we are facing kind of litigation on every frontier. We've got the Board of Appeals now, we've got two lawsuits, two lawsuits, and so I, my, that would be my.
I think we should wait till litigation is.
Yeah, so maybe we should go stay away from it any further, and I was expressing only my views as an individual on that.
We can initiate internal staff discussions without the council having a discussion, so at least when the time comes, we're prepared to have a more detailed discussion with you.
I guess my question would be how long we'd be staying away from it.
Could be a long time.
Because, you know, part of the concern would be.
Right.
Addressing the issue. Addressing the issue.
Well, yeah, I can't answer that question, but I think, you know, over the next couple months, we'll have a, I could probably give you a better sense of that.
Let's turn to the November 23 packet.
IP8, conversations on diversity. They have a lunch and learn tomorrow here in Harbet Hall, led by Professor Katrina Sanders of the U of I College of Education.
I think that was canceled.
Oh, was it?
I think it was. It was just canceled this week.
They're still going to do the talk. I mean.
She, yeah.
Not Dr. Katrina Sanders, but whoever's on a human rights commission.
Joe Coulter.
Joe Coulter is going to do kind of a conversation.
So there still will be an event, but it will be not on that topic, and it will be on diversity in the community.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Now we know. Anything else from that packet?
I would just say it highlight IP2, the article that Jeff submitted on the inclusive growth depends on cities, that I think some of the points made in that article emphasizing vocational education, affordable housing, infrastructure services that are easily accessible, I think, you know, those are things that we've been working on. So that was encouraging to see that. I think, I think we're moving in good directions on the question of addressing inequities that are widespread in communities all over the country.
Yeah, when I read the language about investing in vocational schools where people of all ages and backgrounds can learn marketable skills, I immediately thought of that project that's part of our strategic plan, Jeff, but we haven't been able to make much headway on, so. Okay, December 1.
IP12, is there, I just had a question, is there online method, Jeff, for this? It's the Iowa City Police Department Reaccreditation Assessment Team Invites Public Comment. It says here that telephone comments are helpful, as well as anyone willing to submit written comments, but is, you have to mail it? Is there any, like, online piece?
I would have to imagine that there is. I don't know why that wouldn't be included with this release, but honestly, I'll have to check on that and let you know.
It says at the very end of the press release that you can go to www.calea.org to submit comments.
Yeah, but when I, yeah, okay.
I mean, I haven't looked at it, but.
I looked at it, and I didn't see, it didn't see anything that I could find, but, but it could, it could be there. I was reading it late at night, so.
Okay.
I had a question on IP8 regarding the scope of services on the Climate Action Plan. The duration of the contract, is there any possibility of that being reduced from, I think it's 12 months now, to a shorter duration?
I actually have a slide I could bring up if you have a second here. Let's see. The lights, all right, just one second. This is just a quick update about the timelines that we have with the Compact of Mayors, which is relevant to what your question is. We signed the compact, Mayor Throgmorton signed it in February this year, and we have the timeline there that we have for that commitment is, it's a three-year program, and we signed the commitment, which is Phase 1, in February. We're finishing up the inventory with the new climate methods that we're supposed to use with the new protocol, so we've been working hard on fast-tracking that, because that, sometimes cities hire that out to have other, have engineering firm or somebody do the inventory, but we've chosen to do that in-house, so that's quickly, done quickly. We're hoping that tonight, or sometime soon this month, we'll complete Phase 3. And then with our Climate Action Plan, you'll see Phase 4 is usually done in the third year. So we're really trying to fast-track this whole process and try and do it as well as possible. And you can see that, that this, which is a really respectable compact that's now global, is a great, or, great organization to be associated with, because whatever we do will be seen online and will be seen globally now that the, that it's gone a global covenant of mayors. And so the usual timeline that they usually allow a city to work on this, to action plan is about two years, so that's a time that's normally expected, and most cities that have talked to take about a year or two to complete the process. The reason it takes a while is because there's many things involved. I mean, I have one more slide. And that is that we have our inventory, our information that we have, we have from the year 2000, and then annual data from 2008 to 2015. And with our inventories, we work with, the data that we have is industry, commercial, residential, the University of Iowa Power Plant, transportation, and waste. And so to work with all those sectors and to get a really good buy-in from people in the community who are working with that, does take some time to establish relationships, explain the process, and really go through and find strategies that we can count that are in with the emissions reductions that they, that we want. And so to speed that up would be difficult. We can certainly try. The quickest I've ever heard a city going through the process with the community effort has been about a year. One thing to point out about this chart here is that we made this with the data, with the proposed reduction from 2005 as a baseline to 2025. So the green line there, you can see, we're already trending downward. And so if we choose this as a target, we could probably exceed this target. And there's nothing to say, when we have a target, that it would be, that we can go beyond that, which, in this, we're not even including the renewable energy from Mid-Americans. So I think that the important thing is to get buy-in from the different people around town and have their commitment and their regard for this, and to take it serious, and to sign up to be a part of this, so.
I'd like to just reemphasize that, because I think that gets lost a little bit in some of the public discussion. We set an emissions reduction goal for the entire community, but we have somewhat limited control to ensure that those targets are met. So that buy-in piece is really critical. You know, there's certainly some things we can do with our own facilities, with transportation, and to a more limited extent, public policy. But at the end of the day, if we can't get our industry, if the university's not on board, if commercial businesses and residential dwelling units aren't impacted, we won't achieve what we want to do. So we want to be careful. I understand the urgency, and I've read the urgency come through, you know, in the emails that you've received, but without buy-in, the goal that you set is going to be very difficult to achieve.
Indeed. Brenda, I sent you an email earlier today asking about 1990 emissions, et cetera. Can we talk about that right after the meeting's over?
Sure.
This part of it's over. All right, thank you. I'd like to, if we're done with that, I'd like to turn to IP6, Sanctuary City. And it refers to, it is a memo I sent you on December the 1st. And it states the obvious, that many residents are deeply concerned about how things are going to unfold, and they want us to declare Iowa City a sanctuary city. And I totally understand their motivation, couldn't be more obvious. And I, as the memo says, I've been thinking about putting this topic on our work session agenda for January 3rd, so we could have a more extensive discussion about it. And I just want to know if that makes sense to you all, that we do discuss it thoroughly on the, on January 3rd. I think it's not a simple question. I'll tell you straight out, I have my own thinking about it, and then we can, you can just tell me if we want to have this further discussion on the 3rd. We need to think about the politics of the situation, it seems to me. And the label Sanctuary City can attract a lot of attention, and we can avoid attracting undesired attention that might be harmful to our residents if we don't use the label, and instead fulfill the policies and carry out policies that are consistent with it. So, that's my own personal point of view. And I just wonder if you all would agree that it would be okay to discuss the topic on the January 3rd work session?
Would it be, would it be possible, Jim, to have input from our law enforcement folks by then, too? Because this does involve them quite a bit.
Well, Eleanor has written quite a, when we, when this came up the last time, she wrote, I think, a very good memo telling us what we can and can't do, and.
Yeah, situations change just a little bit, but yes.
Yeah, it's not changed, the piece that hasn't changed is the use of the biometric data from the fingerprints that goes directly to ICE. And so that, that issue of perhaps making assurances that you can't really make is still out there. What President Obama has chosen to do with that information has changed, but it's still, they're still using that data.
Yeah.
Jim, it would be really great, just for the student body, I think, for this discussion to be had. I know many people in the Latinx community specifically who are, well, at least Latinx community, who are dreamers that are very worried about the situation. And if we're not using the term Sanctuary City, I think a lot of people understand what that means. So in terms of the climate, it would be nice to be able to clearly communicate what's been, like, what's come out of this discussion. So coming up with a clear way to communicate what's actually been done.
Yeah, I'm aware also that there's extensive discussion about a sustainable campus, that topic's being pushed within the university, I know that.
Yeah, and there's also considerable work being done at the law school around this particular topic as well.
That's mainly as what I was.
Oh, that's what you're talking about. So I would say, I would agree with Rockne, yes. My only issue is, from the student perspective, if we're doing it too early, but other than that, I mean, to make sure that people are paying attention, just because it's January 3rd, right? So it's like right after New Year's, but.
Yeah. And I would agree, it'd be better if we had more time to discuss it, but I think there is a degree of urgency to this. And I think for me, as I frame this issue, it's, to the extent we do have control, what is our policy going to be? And so I think, for example, of what we achieved with the Community ID, working in close partnership with the Johnson County, the City of Iowa City, and other municipalities, that was a core element of what a lot of Sanctuary City proponents want to achieve. And so that's what I think we should focus on, is to the extent we do have control, what's our, like, for example, I can see grants coming down along the line that are going to be very consistent with, say, if you take this federal money, well, then you have to do X, Y, and Z. So I think those are the sorts of things that we have to signal. And even if we're only a rhetorical posture, I think that's going to be important as well, saying we don't like this particular provisions of the law. So I think we should have that discussion, and hopefully then reach out to the law school as well, for some of their immigration practitioners to get their feedback, too.
Okay, so we'll put it on the January 3rd work session, excuse me, work session agenda.
Is there anything else that you want from staff in preparation for that work session?
Well, one thing that comes to my mind is a listing of key policies that we currently have in place that are consistent with that idea. Or inconsistent, for that matter, but I'm thinking mainly of consistency. Okay, we can probably move on. KXI schedule, we need to do that, right? So I just did my interview on the 30th, so who else is, wants to sign up?
December 16th, I'm already signed up for that, that's a Friday.
I can do the 14th.
14th, the December.
December.
Kingsley?
Yes, and then January, ah!
You just had it.
January 6th.
Fast fingers.
6th or 20th.
I think, oh my gosh, well, give me a second.
Is January 18th a day?
January 6th and 20th is a Friday. 18th is a Wednesday.
That's okay with.
Okay.
With me.
Okay. I'm sorry, Kingsley, I'm sorry, can we go back? Are you January 6th then? Was that a yes, or?
Yes, January 6th and 20th, and December 14th.
January 6th and 20th, I'm trying to keep the Fridays from the, from the Wednesdays, is what I'm doing here.
Okay, sorry, so.
So, so the Fridays, the 6th and 20th is Kingsley. In Fridays.
Wednesday, the 11th, is that still open?
And December, the 14th is Botchway. December 21st, is anybody?
I'll do it.
21st?
I'll take the 28th.
Thank you. January 4th?
I can do the 4th.
11th?
I'll do it.
Okay, go ahead.
Dickens?
Yep.
18th?
I'll take it.
That's me.
Oh, you're doing that, 18th, okay.
John?
John. I'll do the 25th.
Thank you. And then I'm to February 1.
I'll do that.
Rockne?
Yep.
February 8th? It's longer this time because of the holidays and your meeting schedule, and I apologize.
I can do February 8th, I'll be back in town.
Okay, and then the final one is February 3rd, Friday.
I can, I mean, that's a back-to-back-to-back, but I can do the 3rd.
I'll do it.
Okay.
Okay, I'll do, we'll have a rough schedule in this week's packet.
Woman. Then I'm doing December this coming Friday.
Yes.
I think you know that.
If there's any way to coordinate, I know that I just picked my date, but with snow, snowfall, if mine fall on snowfall, dates can be changed out with other councils.
Duly noted. Coordination with the radio schedule and snowfall.
Nice try. Any other items on that information packet?
Yeah.
All right, I don't hear any, but before we stop for, stop our work session, I want to note the presence of a new person here, sitting up here, Ashley Monroe, our new Assistant City Manager. I'd like to welcome you aboard, Ashley. I don't know if this all seems familiar to you, or wildly unfamiliar.
So far, relatively familiar.
Hopefully.
Scared her away, but. Well, we're really happy to have you with us, so. All right, anything else that we need to discuss? I guess not? Okay, we're done for our work session for this evening.